Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I will call the order of the February 4th meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the robe?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Grievous?
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will move into our citizens portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed today on the day's agenda.
Norman Madel, Salina, Kansas. Last week at your study session, the moderator suggested that we should be addressing our supervisors. You don't get nothing done by going at the chain of command. You gotta go right to the top. I've been there. He said we should, if you abstain from vote, you have to vote yes or no. Why would I vote no and yet support a yes vote? Why aren't we having a county counselor present at meetings? He can give you advice, his opinion. We're having lawsuits. But our county counselor is in here. That was on the screen as their moderator's talking. Why don't we sell that old jail? It's a money hole. It's an expense we taxpayers should not be having. Put it online. Have you, Commissioner, do you ever read your code of conduct once a week? The biggest issue I had at that study session, when that moderator put his fist up in somebody's face, that's a threat. I've been there. I was in the line taking my boat to the boat races in Missouri and this, I don't know who he was, was he staff or what? He come up and he stuck his fist in my window. And that was a threat and I really better hit him back because that's a threat. Don't put your closed fist up at me. You better open it. What's in there? So, there's a lot more. It's in the news. We're having plastic in our bodies. Can we have any way you suggest to the city to not allow any plastic in our landfill? You guys got a lot on your plate. We'll see if you can clean up the plate.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax roll adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of county commission meeting minutes of January 14th, approval of county commission meeting minutes of January 21st, approval of talk group MOU with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, approval of agreement for employment of new behavioral health court coordinator. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
I move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will move into action items.
Financing for Rural Fire District Number Three for the Brookville Fire Station with Scott Abker, the Rural Fire District Number Three Fire Chief.
Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, commissioners. First, I'd like to apologize for not being here at our last commission meeting. I drive a school bus for Elseline. They had a two-hour delay that morning. I did everything I could to get here before you finished and I just could not make it. I apologize.
Okay.
Rural Fire District Three, as you know, plans to build a new fire station there in Brookville. We opened bids on December the 9th and recommendation to award the bid will be presented in a separate request for action following this one. Three local banks were contacted about financing for up to $650,000 for the project. Bennington State Bank was 5.415% for the first five years and then adjustable after that on a 20-year term. Approximate maximum annual payment would be $54,008. First Bank Kansas quoted 5.75% for the first seven years and then adjustable after that on a 20-year term. Approximate annual payment there would be $56,000. Bank of Tesco was 7.65% fixed rate for 20 years. Approximate maximum annual payment would be $64,489. This request is to authorize financing for the project through Bennington State Bank for the amount not to exceed $650,000 and up to a 20-year long term. Annual payments with interest rate of 5.21 for that first five years. The annual amount needed for financing will be dependent on the bid awarded and the final project costs after the construction's complete. Obviously, the alternatives for action is to approve or reject the financing offers. We recommend financing. We met on January the 13th as a board of trustees and made that recommendation then. The final amount that will be needed to be financed will be dependent on the bid award and the final project costs after construction is complete. Financing the full $650,000 with a term of 20 years would result in an annual payment of around $54,008. This will be made from the district's annual budget. We did increase our budget for this year $34,000 in anticipation of this building payment. Once that construction's complete and the final amount financed and the final yearly payment is determined, the district may have to increase the budget in future years, really not to exceed another $20,000. I should also point out that we also have about 60, $50,000 and $50,000 and $3,000 in donated funds that are in wait for this project. So, we do not anticipate financing the full $650,000.
Okay, thank you.
Question, I don't know if it's a typo or if I'm missing something, but you mentioned that Bennington State Bank was a 5.415%, but in your request, you're showing interest rate of 5.215.
That is, as we moved forward with this and had a couple of delays, this RFA got rewritten twice. So, that is a typo. What's there on the front page is the accurate number.
So, I think we ought to make sure that our request for action shows that it is 5.415. Is that right, Scott?
Yeah. I apologize for that. I did not catch that.
Okay. Any other comments by the commission? Any comments by the public? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the financing for Rural Fire District Three Brookville Fire Station, I believe it's RFA 2025-11.
Second?
We have a motion and a second that we approve RFA 20-25-11 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Bid award for Rural Fire District Number Three with Scott Abker, Rural Fire District Number Three Fire Chief.
Continue on. On April 23rd of 2024, commissioners authorized the purchase of land from the city of Brookville for the purpose of building a new fire station. We've been working with WDM Architects for the design, bid specifications, and the necessary surveys required there for the construction. Fire District solicited bids for the construction of the fire station and bids were opened on December the 9th at 10:00 a.m. Four bids were received. Salina County Fire District Three Board of Trustees held two special meetings, one on December 30th, or two meetings, one on December 30th and then on January 13th to review the bids. NF Construction's base bid was $661,000. Had a timeframe to complete of about 200 days. We had an alternate in there for signage for the station that each of the bidders put in and their estimate was $2,200. Wens and Company, base bid was $680,000, had a time of completion of 180 days. They wanted $8,000 for the alternate. And then they suggested possible deductions that could be made for how the liner panel is installed and that was a $10,000 deduction. Webe Construction, $695,784, 300 days of completion. Alternate for the sign was $3,073. They made the same voluntary deduction for the liner panel. Their amount was $12,173. Harbin Construction was $695,800, 180 days for completion and then signage alternate was $2,250. Salina County Board of Trustees is requesting commission approval to award the bid for the construction for a new fire station to NF Construction for $661,000. Fire District would also request commission approval to authorize Fire Chief and/or Secretary of Treasury with approval from the county administrator to approve change orders up to $5,000 during the project. Alternatives for action is to award the bid to NF Construction, award it to another bidder, or reject all the bids. Board of Trustees recommends awarding the bid to NF Construction for $661,000. Fire District has $4,288.17 remaining in the ARPA fund, grant funds that will be used for the construction project. This will completely expend the $95,000 that the district was awarded by Salina County. The remainder of the construction costs will be obtained through the financing that we just approved from Bennington State Bank and from the district's special equipment fund. Any additional costs related to the project will be withdrawn from the district's special equipment fund and that currently has a balance of $94,610.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
Scott, I've got several questions. I need some, still need some clarification and I talked to Hannah about this and I'm still trying to figure out. According to the bid, it was an engineering design.
Correct.
Okay. Can somebody refer, what's the difference between an engineering design bid and a, just a design bid? And the reason I bring that up is because we've got several, we've got several businesses that would not, did not bid this.
Right.
Because it was an engineering and they don't have any engineering people on staff so they couldn't bid this job.
Right. That is the difference. The design bid is something that is put together by companies like Morton and Star and some of these other post-frame building constructions. An engineering bid building is generally a red iron building made of steel, not a pole barn, so to speak. I think those are primarily the two differences. So, the engineered building requires an engineer, as you said, and the other one does not and they already have their designs already made. And so, that's how they are not required to have an engineer, I guess.
Okay. Well, you know, you know, one reason, I know one reason I was elected to this position up there is, you know, to be a good steward of the taxpayers' money. And I went over this bid. I've looked this bid over. I've looked, you know, looked at other things over. I think we need to figure out a different way if we're gonna, you know, when we request a bid, is when that bid comes back, it's what we want.
Right.
Not get a bid and then all of a sudden, we accept a bid and now we're gonna go back now. Because it says here that, you know, we could be looking at trying to cut 50, 60, 70, $80,000 off of this bid once this bid is completed. You know, I think that ought to, should have been up right up front, having bid that up there. This is what it's gonna, you know, even if it was two different bids on there, okay, this is what it's gonna cost you for this bid and this is what it's gonna cost you for this bid. I just hate, you know, I just, just don't have a good feeling of approving a $650,000 bid and then going out and talking to the contractor again and said, okay, now, how much can you cut off of this? You know, we should have been able to get that cut off before we even accepted that bid.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think we were all very disappointed in how the cost played out on this project. I don't feel that the architect, hiring an architect necessarily guarantees that you are getting value engineering from your architect. I feel like there could be better ways to do this. I've made a couple of suggestions to the county administrator's office that I think would help in situations that where the county is bidding to hire an architect and then proceed with bidding out a project like this. I think there are cost savings to be had, had there been some other options available. But we're pretty far down the road at this point for us, for this project, to back up and say, we're gonna do something different now. The contractor had made contact with the administrator's office and suggested that there were some potential cost savings that could be obtained. And as some of you know, builders find all kinds of ways to get the value of what they want. If I'm gonna build a spec house and I want granite countertops, then I know I'm gonna take money out of some other place so that I can put granite countertops in my, you know, spec house. So, I think there's, I think there was a lot of ways that we could do this a little bit better. But this is where we are today and we really are anxious to get our project moving forward and making this station come to fruition.
I know, Scott, this isn't your first rodeo on building a fire station.
It's not.
Was it, was this done the same way with the fire station in Headville and?
No. The fire station in Headville and the one at Bavaria were both under different county purchasing policies. We probably would never be able to do what we did at Headville again, just because that was a can step grant and a lot of volunteer labor went into that. And we, we did so much of that work ourselves. And that is one of the factors that put us in this position too. I'm not as young as I was when we built the Headville station and I do not believe that I have the stamina to do what I did then. And so, you know, we wanted a station that, we wanted a contractor that we could trust to build us a building that was basically turnkey.
Okay. Well, I just got, the last thing I just wanted to say is, you know, I don't know if it's called a challenge or anything, but I would like to see you do as much as possible, be a good steward of the taxpayers' money, try to save as much money as we can on this project. I don't mean cutting corners and having safety problems, but getting what we can get saved on this so that it comes out and, on this. So, thank you very much.
A quick question here is, where is this NF Construction out of?
Marion.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'd never heard it. I heard of everybody else, but not that one.
Yeah, I had not heard of them until they bid either, so.
I have a question, Scott.
Yes, sir.
The voluntary deduct that Wens and Wee had in there, did those make sense?
They do.
Were they legit? And is that something we can go back to NF and say?
They are. And, you know, I don't know. I don't wanna say, you know, architects put what they would put in their specifications to make their costs higher so they get paid more. I don't know that that's what the issue is here. Maybe it's what they felt was the best option for the project. The liner panel that's listed there is a screwed-on liner panel versus one that has hidden fasteners. So, the specifications asked for hidden fastener liner panel, which is obviously $10,000 to $12,000 more expensive than having liner panel that has screws in it. We have two other stations that have liner panel with screws in them. I see no reason why we couldn't save those dollars and there may be other things in this project that we can do that same thing with.
And the plans for the old station that's being vacated?
Yeah, at this time, we're gonna keep it until we're all done and then my anticipated action is to come back before you and ask to list it for sale somewhere. So, whether that's, you know, by sealed bid or auction or however, the county's policy will let us go ahead and dispose of that.
Thank you.
How much input do you get from your people that you protect on their taxes? I mean, eventually, I mean, remind us who's paying for this. It's not
Certainly.
Public as a whole, it's your district.
Absolutely. And I had that same concern, you know, the, I had asked county administrator's office to help me figure out, you know, what this would do for our property taxes for our area. Ultimately, you know, we based that off of about a $100,000 house and that could increase someone's taxes by about $8.64 roughly per year. And so, you could extrapolate that. If I had a $200,000 house, I'm gonna pay $16 more a year. So, that is our, kind of where we're at at this point. And obviously, those numbers are estimates because mill levies and assessments, valuations all change. So, but that's kind of the ballpark of where I expect.
Just be interesting to me how much feedback you get from, from.
Yeah, we've increased our budget a couple of times. We are very conservative.
Very frugal, yeah, sure.
Very frugal with how we spend money. And so, when we increase our budget, to us, it's a big deal. Cause we're paying for that too. So, we've never had anyone come to us and say, hey, why is my taxes going up for fire protection? We are very well supported by most of the people that are in our fire district. We get people that bring us snacks and pop and Gatorade and, you know, they recognize the importance of what we're doing as volunteers and so I feel like we're very well supported.
Yeah, and I didn't mean that to be critical in any ways. I was just kind of interested.
I think it's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
Quick question here. Has all the, I'm just gonna say, the civil engineering been done here to make sure that it's out of the flood plain and there's no water?
Yes, sir.
Issues here? Okay.
Yeah. Garber surveying, did most of the surveying work and then that went to the engineers at WDM.
Okay. And I just wanna let you know, I was out there yesterday and looking at the site and everything. I ran into a couple that was there and they're just behind it 100% really just, I just wanna let you know that it's like, those people out there are really excited about this happening.
Yep, we are too.
Yep. Good. Any, any other comments by the public?
Norman Madel, as I stated previously, this is why you have a county counselor.
Yes. Okay. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve RFA 2025-13 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 2025-13. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you, Scott. Next item?
Revised EDO agreement with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. So, the county is one of four participants that a number of years ago formed what's called the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. And we annually budget a contribution to that organization. The agreement under which that organization has been operating for a number of years envisions a sort of rolling three-year cycle of funding and requires a number of different reports from them and so forth. It was, it's been talked about over the last year or so that a number of those things are just not really either reasonable or don't fit well with the processes from the four parent organizations. And so, the city of Salina took the lead on revising the agreement, originally anticipating just, you know, making a few changes. It ended up being a complete restatement of the entire agreement, which is what is before you today. This requires the approval of all four of the entities. So, the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce did approve this at the end of January. The city of Salina was scheduled to take it up. I believe they approved it. And this is before you all today. And then we'll go to the Salina Airport Authority at their next meeting, which is the middle of February. So, it makes what I'm gonna say are minor changes as far as the purpose of the organization. But it does restructure some of the reporting requirements. It envisions now doing a sort of annual economic development summit to which the commission, as well as the governing bodies of the other three entities, would be invited to participate, hear about economic development in the community and the plans for the EDO. It also, you know, I think it's a good thing for us. It aligns the budget process to be an annual cycle, has more specific timelines around that. And then also allows the EDO to set their parameters around their accounting system. The former agreement really had some specific requirements that have not proved workable. And makes a few other changes, minor changes. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I see the executive director of the EDO is in attendance as well. But staff recommends approval.
Does it change any funding?
Does not change any funding other than, as I said, it's moving us from a sort of a three-year commitment to an annual commitment. Your commission elected not to change our funding this past year for the 25 budget. So, Mitch would come before us in April, just like he has.
Everybody else does.
And talk about the 26 funding.
Okay. I sit on that board and it's a, it's a very, it's a great board. It's, I mean, I get a lot of information out of it. You get to, you get to meet with, you know, a lot of the other members of that board and, you know, in different walks of life and different walks of, you know, with the, with the, with the city. I guess my question is, you've got a board of directors, the board of directors, and then you've got the liaisons that sit on the thing. The board of directors are the only voting parts of that committee, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, anybody, the city, the county that sits on as a liaison has no voting rights?
That's correct.
Okay.
We have a nine-member board that you all appoint to. City appoints three because of their budget size difference. Airport Authority has two and the chamber has two.
Okay.
So, that's, that's all the voters that we have.
Okay.
So, are you a liaison on that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Any other comments by the commission?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good revision. Any, you know, when this was put together in 2015, you know, it was the best agreement that the parties could work out. And this is really just kind of fine tuning some things over the years that, as Philip said, you know, the- said, you know, the, just some things, accounting, I mean, we were, we were having to pay our budget of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand, you know, we were paying for a full-blown audit. And that, that's pretty excessive in today's accounting world. Nobody, I mean, our accountant said, y'all don't really need this. And of course, we were already agreeing with that just because of what we were having to pay them. But that's gotten worked out. The other kind of big change to me, being in this business for forty years now, this is my fifth community I've worked for, can't keep a job and just work it out that way, is working with our existing companies. Now, we've been doing that. But now we've, the chamber has given that responsibility to us. And that'll allow us to be a little more aggressive with going out and visiting with companies. I mean, obviously, all these expansions we've had, the industrial revenue bond projects we've worked with, we were doing that, but this gives us a little bit. And avoiding duplication was something we, you know, we wanted to avoid as well. So need for both organizations to be doing some of the same work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Coachees.
Yeah, no kidding. Any other comments by the public? Hearing none. I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA twenty twenty-five dash oh eight as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA twenty twenty-five dash oh eight as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item?
Repeal of Crime Reduction Committee with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
A number of years ago, Saline County formed what was then called the Jail Population Reduction Committee to address issues at the former jail site. That evolved over time. It successfully implemented a couple of different programs, but then the work of that committee really stopped once the commission decided that we needed to pursue the idea of building a new jail. It was reinvigorated then a couple of years ago and retitled as the Committee for Reducing Criminal Behavior to try and focus more on those solutions around what else we could do, other programs that we could potentially implement. It has not had the same level of success in its new iteration that it did in the first iteration, and the committee has not met in over a year. So at your discussion around reorganization of your board and committee assignments, Commissioner Shadwick suggested that we might as well just go ahead and do away with this one. So it was adopted by resolution, so we will need a resolution for repeal, and that is the item that is before you today. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a quick question, and I just noticed it's a repeal of Crime Reduction Committee twenty-five nineteen, and that's the request for action. But the adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four twenty-two, is that the same?
Yes, when it's a resolution, we request the motion to adopt the resolution rather than to.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you.
RFA.
Quick question. So this is a committee that was formed by the county. That's why they passed a resolution to do that, wasn't one that we joined someone else's, that's why?
That's correct. The county commission appointed all the members to this one, and those terms have sort of lapsed as well.
Okay. Any other comments by the commission? Any comments by the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four twenty-two as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution twenty-five dash twenty-four twenty-two as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We'll move into informational items.
Treasurer's Idol Fund Report with Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, once again, I have good news to present to you. If you look at your sheets, your idle fund reports, about three-quarters of the way down on the fourth quarter, at the end of December, we earned four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and forty cents compared to last year, which was two hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents, which is a difference of two hundred and four thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. I think some of that's just because of the influx of taxes, tax money that came in, which affected our bank account and the interest in our bank account also. Couple different things I want to point out to you. Over the last two years, where we exceeded the two million dollar mark, for 2023 and 2024, we made four million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and two dollars off of interest. Now, if you look in the reports, anywhere from 2008 going up to 2021, we only made four million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So at least in my mind, that's a record for Saline County. We've done extremely well. I want to thank our crew. And of course, we coordinate a lot of that with the county administrator, too. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Got one question here.
Yes, sir.
Should, should the totals, when we look at 2024 year-to-date interest earnings, first, second, third, and fourth quarter, added together, is that the interest earned as of December thirty-first?
Yeah, the total interest earned, yep.
Okay. And when I compare that to the quarterly interest of 2023, across the board, it was quite a bit larger. But when you look at interest earned in 2023, it was more than 2024.
Twenty twenty-three is correct, yeah. We did earn more interest in 2023 than 2024.
That's not what... I must be looking at something wrong. Now, you look at your first quarter, 2024, you made six hundred and forty-two thousand. In 2023, you made seventy-one thousand. And you go to second quarter, and you go to the third and fourth, that's not adding up to me.
I'll take a look at it and get back with you then, Commissioner. Yeah, that, this came from our late accountant, so I'll take a look at it. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item?
Planning and zoning year-end update with Tim Hamilton, planning and zoning administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. This is to kind of review what we went over, the planning commission last year. County commission, you all appointed Kathleen Malone Crouch to replace Kai Woodrich upon his passing. And she has been with the commission now since early last year. The planning commission considered four conditional use permits in 2024. All were approved. Much of the year, however, the planning commission spent reviewing amendments to the zoning code. This included a resolution adopting provisions for commercial solar farm installations in the county, which was approved by the county commission in August. The public provided a lot of very useful information regarding their concerns about these facilities, which aided the planning commission in their drafting of this resolution. The remainder of the year was spent reviewing and considering information on battery energy storage systems with a resolution to be considered by the county commission later on this year. We've got to get some language, make sure that the language is all includes a lot of the things that the city also wants to include for their commercial permit review. Our building permits, you can see we've, it went down a little bit, but we did have two really big commercial projects. One was the Kubota, the remodeling to accommodate Kubota's new location there on South Ninth, as well as the Wellburn Sales Facility that went a little bit further south on Ninth. Staff is for the, this year, we're in the process of, as I stated before, we're reviewing that resolution, establishing provisions for the best facilities, battery energy storage, which the planning commission has, had recommended approval of. Again, this is another one where the, the public really gave a lot of good input, helping us to formulate the, these provisions, putting them together. We addressed, I think, to the best of, or the planning commission did to the best of our abilities, the addressing those concerns that the public had for safety. The, this will be brought to you, as I stated, once we get, we're, you know, coordinate with the city, is making sure that our commercial permit, their commercial permit review that we require for any commercial permits, that the codes match with what the resolution has mentioned. So the planning commission will also be considering additional amendments to the zoning and subdivision regulations as part of the implementation of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. And this may include some additional alternative energy provisions from sources currently in the research and development stage, but not really out there yet in the development stage. We want to kind of get ahead of our, get ahead of the curve on that and see what we can do to, to include those provisions before they start becoming a, just to give us some idea, before they start becoming more popular. On the budget, revenue and expenditures for the planning and zoning and environmental health, for 2024, we had a revenue of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. The expenditures were two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen eighty-nine. And this, the, the revenue for the, for 2024 is up from the previous 2023 numbers. This is because staff has been doing a really good job at getting the, the accounts payable from previous, you know, people who are delinquent in some of their payments. So we've been able to acquire a lot of, of those back payments. Our expenditures also have gone down from, from, from 2023 as well. So this, that's basically what I've got for now for you. I said, if you have any questions.
Tim, I just got one, want to back up on the, on the best.
Yeah.
Did you, did the planning commission get any professional input from any, anybody on this, I mean, to give you guys the information you needed? And I want to thank the public for, or the, you know, the citizens for coming out and, you know, really giving their input. And, you know, there was a lot of concerns out there, you know, when the last time it came around. But I didn't know, was there any, was there any outside professional stuff brought in to say, you know, the pros and cons of this, so you, you were able to?
The, the commission was able to, and a couple of the commissioners were actually able to brought, did some of their own research as well. But there were, there was no, I wouldn't say that there's, there was no real, no one that gave input from the outside necessarily, other than the, you know, potential, you know, developers of that particular type of use. But as far as the research, the research that was done was done primarily on the planning commission side and staff side as well to gain as much information as possible, but no, no individuals professionally came in and spoke.
So I just want to ask the question is, is that so, what you're saying is that the, did you go out and did we, our planning and zoning commission, did we look at other counties that have addressed this situation and to find out how and what they've done?
That was, we, we looked at other, yes, other locations, other states as well.
Okay.
To, to make sure, you know, and we get, got a lot of information, a lot of useful information. And like I say, a lot of the information, though, came from, the planning commission did a lot of their own homework on this, which was, you know, I applaud them for that because, you know, and, and staff did, too. But I'm just saying, we, we all kind of worked in tandem with each other on this. So hopefully, this will be, I think we've addressed all of the, the concerns to the best of our ability that the, the public may have had, you know, on that, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the commission?
Tim, does your, your revenue and expenditures, do they include health and environment?
Yes, sir. That's the, I would say that's the majority of it.
Okay. But, but it doesn't, okay.
Okay. Any comments by the public?
I think one thing.
Please state your name and address.
Mitch Robinson, one twenty West Dash Cross Street. One thing that Commissioner Hayes questioned about getting professional outside help, you might comment, and I think it's important, is some of the national standards that you all looked at to bring in. You might elaborate a little bit more on that because that really kind of set the basis for what the planning commission did. You might tell them that.
And, well, a lot of, yes, there were, I was, actually, those kinds of details I would, you know, rather get into when we actually bring the resolution to you. But yes, there was some investigation. This is, reflects what the, the planning commission researched as well and on their own in bringing, and as well as information from the public that they had brought to us regarding certain codes and certain standards that we, we've tried to incorporate into the, into that resolution as well, so.
Any other comments? Thank you. Next item?
Quarterly Budget Update with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Morning again, commissioners. So the quarterly budget through the end of twenty-four, it's been delayed a little bit getting the information to you. But I will say again, with the caveat that we're always dealing with unaudited numbers, auditors will be here the middle of this month. But our revenue picture was very positive. The treasurer was before you a few items ago and talked about interest income. Sales tax income was also, once again, at record levels. We had another, a number of other fortunate incidents in terms of revenue. The sheriff's office got some back payments from the state for folks that they had been holding on behalf of the state. Big chunk of cash came in. So on the revenue side, it was a very positive year in 2024. Expenditures, however, I will say, while they were within budget, they were much closer to budget than what we have experienced in the past. And I think it's just a tightening of the, of the budget and a, you know, a tightening of the economic conditions. Certainly, you know, 2024 was the first year of operation of the new jail facility. We didn't know exactly what the operational expenses would be at that facility because we hadn't done it before. And so at the time, we did budget in four twenty-four, in the middle of twenty-three, didn't add much to the sheriff's budget for operation of that facility. And the sheriff did end up exceeding his budget at the end of the year, just on the basis of utility costs and some other things that were beyond his control. So there were a number of things like that where, where expenditures were just much tighter than what we've experienced in the past. And so I think that is, you know, a foreboding signal for department head.
signal for department heads as we go through the rest of this year and start talking about development of the 2026 budget, but it certainly, you know, while, while it raises, you know, concern for me, it's not a crisis. As I said, overall, we were within budget on the expenditure side, so be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by the commission? Okay, thank you. Next item?
County Administrator update with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
So two items that I wanted to cover under my update today. First is legislation. It is that season of the year when folks are in PICA. There are a number of things that have been introduced regarding open records, changes, the extraterritorial jurisdiction, or the three-mile zone around cities and, and their ability to do planning. There've been some elections bills that I would say if passed would create some complications. They, there's been a health bill that's once again been introduced regarding the ability of KDHE and by extension, local health officers to do quarantine orders in the future. But big picture, I would say there has been less legislation of specific concern to counties introduced so far. One example of what I'm talking about is that currently, you know, the, the legislature has talked a lot about property tax reform, but currently, those discussions are about doing something with the portions of property tax that they control, the one and a half mils for state institutions and the 20 mils for schools. So that's great. We've been encouraging them for a number of years. If you want to do something about property taxes, do something about your own property taxes, not city and county taxes, because that's how we fund all the other services that are important to our local residents. However, they, they don't seem to be coming to agreement between the House and the Senate on what that package looks like. So the risk there, and on our call with the KAC on Friday, they talked about, you know, if that happens, if the, the House and the Senate cannot come to agreement on what they want to do with the state's portion of property tax, then sort of the easy button for them will be to do something on the backs of local governments late in the session and a little bit more difficult to react to. So that does remain a concern. We are continuing to monitor. As I said, there are bills in specific areas like elections and health that we have concerns about, but overall, big picture seems to be a better legislative session for us this year than it has been the last couple of years. The other item that I wanted to address today is the regulations around battery energy storage systems. So as Tim mentioned in his update, those need a little bit further review. So originally, we had anticipated bringing those to you next Tuesday, and I just want the commission, and more importantly, the public, to know they will not be on your agenda for next Tuesday. Currently, our best guess is that they will probably come back in April, could be late March, but late March or in April, when we will see those regulations in their final form. That is what I have for you this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Any other? We'll move into next item?
Commissioners' comments.
None. Anything? Next item?
Announcements.
I do have one announcement, which is that the commission will be back in this room Monday at 2:30. Want folks to be aware that one of the big projects that we've been talking about for a while is review of the downtown facilities jointly with the city of Salina, so there will be a joint study session, a city commission, county commission, and the building authority board next Monday, this room, 2:30 PM, and then we'll be back here, of course, on Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. Any other comments or questions? If there's no further, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.